I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. Sorry, my laptop's not showing any internet. Recognition of Lucas Shane-Halls, Lisa Repit, and Gloria Kirby.
So, I invited them in. They have done so much for Stacy's Closet and the endeavors that they're taking on in regards to scholarships and funding for students moving forward. So, wanted to recognize this Gloria, she's not coming, Lisa and Lucas. And if you would stand please and share a little bit about what you're doing with Stacy's Closet and some of the funds and the support to Rochester students that's going to bring.
So, Stacy's Closet came out of a need for kids that, you know, whether it's hygiene or clothes, it was housed in the nurse's office and then got big enough to where it kind of took on its own room behind the library there at the middle school. So, it'll have clothes, it'll have hygiene products, it'll have school supplies, stuff like that. Deanna Vanamashi and Valerie Good are kind of heading that up. They were able to get all the orders around. I think it's a little bit over eight grand what the foundation is giving to get the room set up and get going with what it needs.
And then additional items that we're doing, because we wanted to make sure that we captured youth in elementary to the middle school with Stacy's Closet, to the high school. So, the elementary, we're working with Times Theater. And every month, one movie for 12 and under will be free for the entire year. And our goal is that we hopefully we can continue to do that year after year. And then for the high school, on the athletic teams, we're hosting athletic dinners for them. So, like tonight, the tennis team is having pizza and ice cream. Last Thursday night, the football team, we served over 50 guys and they had a taco bar. And so, those are just some of the things that we're doing to try to support all levels within the school.
Yeah, because scholarship is fully funded and ready to go.
Thank you for all you do. And she would be so proud of you. Okay. And Lisa, if you want to go, you're welcome to go. Lucas has to stay, I'm sorry. You can go as well, too. You've got, I mean, Cassie's here, so if you need to go, have a good evening. Item C, recess the regular board meeting at this time. Do I hear motion? Do we have to move on or what?
Declare it so.
Declare it so. All right. And we will open the public hearing on our budget. There are, that was in our board packet, three plus pages. And I'm sorry, this thing, oh, Scott, can you help me get on the internet here? What the heck? Is RCSC guest? The notice to the taxpayers. Do we need to read that whole thing to our taxpayers?
No.
No. It is available on our website under the Agenda Items for Today, and it would be the public hearing.
And then we need to do the resolution and go on the resolution to adopt Capital Projects Fund.
Okay. And then we have a resolution to adopt the, thank you very much. It's still coming up as a question mark. I got nothing. All right, sorry. Do I need to read the resolution then?
You need to read from the middle where it says, "Therefore, be it resolved."
Therefore be it resolved by the Board of Trustees that the plan entitled 2024 Capital Projects Plan, this resolution, and is adopted, oh my gosh, as the Board of Trustees' plan with respect to capital projects. Be it further resolved that the Board of Trustees shall submit a certified copy of this resolution to the Department of Local Government Finance as required by IC 20-40-18-6. Any questions, comments, or complaints?
I have a question about the notice to the taxpayers. The meeting time is, the date would be accurate, but the time is not for our October meeting, unless we're meeting at midnight, which that would be unique, but I guess possible. Does that matter or does that need to be corrected?
It does need to be corrected.
So, the public hearing time's at 6:30, the adoption meeting time?
At least on what I see, it's midnight, unless that's been corrected from what I've seen.
Midnight madness.
It sounds like he is.
I will take care of that correction.
Thank you.
All right. So, we'll move on. We need to vote on the Capital Projects Resolution?
No, no, no. Not until next meeting.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Casey. And then we have a resolution to adopt the bus replacement plan. Therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Trustees that the plan entitled Bus Replacement Plan, this resolution, and is adopted as the Board, thank you, she's making it bigger for me, is adopted as the Board of Trustees' plan with respect to the school bus replacement plan. Be it further resolved that the Board of Trustees shall submit a certified copy of this resolution to the Department of Local Government Finance as required by IC 20-40-18-9. And we will vote on them at the next meeting. Any questions, comments, or concerns about our resolutions? Okay. Any comments from anybody at the public hearing? If, if none, then we will go ahead and end the public hearing and resume our regular board meeting. Oh my gosh, this is killing me. All right. Need my eight-year-old laptop. All right. Next, we have Consent Items. Approval of the minutes from the August 21st, 2023 Regular Meeting Session. Did everybody get a chance to read that? Any questions or concerns that we need to correct in that one? Jenny, you've got an EUI posted up, so.
I wasn't here, though. I mean, I read it, so I assume it's good. We weren't here, though, so.
Mark zoomed in. Okay. So, this is, I would entertain a motion, we accept the board minutes from the, where am I? I am using my goggles. For the August 21st Regular Meeting. Not only was I not here, I don't know that I'm here right now. All right, then. I would entertain a motion, we accept that as presented.
Some move.
Casey.
Second.
And Jenny. All right, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries seven to zero. Next, we have the approval of certification of the executive meeting held August 21st, 2023. And that's, any questions or concerns about, that's just a blip. We don't put any details in the paperwork, so.
There's just typos. Sheriff has one R, it's a two.
Are you there? Got it. Okay. So, I would entertain a motion that we accept the approval of the certification of the executive session with the amendment as stated. So, move. Casey.
Second.
Steven. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries seven to zero. Financial Report. Hello, Todd.
Good afternoon, good evening.
And good night, there you go.
All right. In August, in the Education Fund, we had receipts of $1,030,132.60. Expenses in August of $1,124,716.60. Our cash balance at the end of August, Education Fund, is $835,953.40. Debt Service Fund, we had receipts of $7,048.72. No expenses in August. The cash balance at the end of August in the Debt Service Fund is $1,175,046.29. And for those of you that were paying attention, I did not update the graph in the top part of that sheet, so I wouldn't do that. Operations Fund in August, we had receipts of $9,351.09. And expenses of $667,330.83. Our cash balance at the end of August in the Operations Fund is $351,373.20. I would like to add that in some of the time that I was off taking care of some personal things, that we paid for buses and I had intended for that to come out of the GeoVOD and that didn't happen. So, I will be making that change in August. That was approximately $278,000.
Okay. Anything else, Todd?
That's it, other than, but any questions that you might have?
Questions from the board?
I just noticed that with that correction, then with the buses, that means two months in a row, that year over year, Operations Fund expenses are down a little bit, which is excellent. So, we appreciate you and everyone else on the team working hard to look at every expense since that has been a concern.
Thank you. Yes, it has been. And the Operations Group, the technology, the food service, the transportation, we're doing an excellent job of fixing, taking care of issues that we have in a longer-term way, preventing maintenance, et cetera, that is slowly starting to be, so. I'd like to shout out to those groups as well.
Okay. Moving on, for Approval of Claims. Anything to share on the claims, Todd?
I do not.
Okay. Any questions from the board? And moving on to the payroll for August 25th, 2023, and September 8th, 2023, troubling $996,192.45. Any questions or concerns there? All right. If everybody, if there are no questions or concerns from the board or the community, we'll go ahead and make a motion that we accept the claims, payroll, and financial report as presented. Thank you, Mark.
Second. I get to choose.
So many decisions. Okay. All right. And moving on to item J, Resolution Determining Need for Projects. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah. I just think we're good enough for this. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries seven to zero.
Before we move on, since Todd's on here with us, have we gotten updated funds from the COVID that we've been missing for?
As for reimbursement side?
We got, we were reimbursed sometime in the first half of the year. We received that, we still have, we're probably out right now, about $400,000 to be reimbursed, and I haven't really thought too much about it. I know there's some, I have to do some work on that grant to make sure that we fulfill the, lack of a better word, educational catch-up portion of that that we have to live by, which is about $650,000. So, I want to make sure that we hit that and don't, that we are, that we're compliant and not, don't draw any attention to that, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Next, we have the resolution determining the need for projects. And does that need to be read aloud? Lauren?
Depends what it looks like. I can't see it.
What?
I can't see it yet.
Can you see around me?
I can. Be it resolved, you can start from there at the bottom.
All right, then. Be it resolved that a need exists for the projects and that the projects cannot be funded from sufficient funds available to school corporation, and that this board proceed to take such steps as may be necessary to secure the projects and leasing of such school facility as provided by the Indiana Code Title 20, Article 47, Chapter 3. It was again available on the, on Board Docs for the public and the community. And did everybody get a chance to look through that? Any questions? So, if everyone is in agreement or if everyone is ready, we will go ahead and entertain a motion that we move forward with this. Some move. Casey?
Second.
Mark? All right, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries seven to zero. Next up, we have the resolution approving the preliminary plans, form of lease, and authorizing publication of Notice of Lease Hearing. And again, we move to the, be it resolved. Be it resolved that the terms and conditions of the proposed form of lease and the documents are approved and agreed to as the basis for a hearing as required by law, and that such hearing should be held by this board upon the necessity for the execution of such lease and whether the lease rental provided therein is a fair and reasonable rental for the proposed portion of the building prior to final determination of such questions, so that this board may determine whether to exceed such lease as now written or as modified. Be it further resolved that the Secretary of the Board is authorized and directed to publish a notice of such hearing as required by law. Questions? Okay. If there are no questions, we'll go ahead and approve, approve the resolution.
Some moves.
Thank you, Jenny.
Second.
And Casey. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries seven to zero. And the third resolution, the third, Resolution Reapproving Formation of Building Corporation. Did you explain this at the study session, didn't you? Okay. Any questions about that? This is where we had the two, we needed to merge them into one. And I had to sign for it. It had better be legal.
Oh, I thought we left it, too.
Huh?
I thought it was left as two portions.
We're reapproving the building. This is a resolution to build that, correct? To form the group.
Right, to form the two into the one. Is that what we're talking about here?
No, this is saying that the building corporation has been formed and that you still want it there.
Yes, okay.
To be able to lease the school for this new bond.
Okay.
You're just reaffirming their existence and you still want them.
Got it. All right. So, be it resolved, be it resolved. Section 1, be it resolved by the Board of School Trustees, the Board of the School Corporation as follows. Section 1, this is hereby determined to be proper and in the public interest of the citizens of this school corporation to reapprove the incorporation of the building corporation known and designed as the Rochester Community School Building Corporation for the purpose of financing, removing, constructing, and equipping certain school facilities and leasing same to the school corporation. Section 2, that providing for the financing, oh, section 2, followed by section 3, thank you, that the articles of the incorporation and bylaws of the building corporation previously presented to the board are hereby reapproved. Section 3, that providing for the financing, renovating, constructing, and equipping of such school facilities by the building corporation and the lease of same to this school corporation is in the public interest of the citizens of this school corporation, and it is proper public, is a proper public purpose for which the board agrees to cooperate with the building corporation to assist in fulfilling the requirements of all agencies of the federal, state, and local governments. Section 4, that the issuance, sale, and delivery by the building corporation of one or more series of bonds designated Rochester Community School Building Corporation ad valorem property, ad valorem property tax first mortgage bond, Series 2023, or such other name or series designated as determined at the time of the sale, the bonds in the aggregate principal amount of approximately $6,105,000 hereby approved. Section 5, this is fine, that upon the redemption or retirement of the bonds, the school corporation will accept from the building corporation title to such school facilities, free and clear of any and all leads and encumbrances thereon. Section 6, that this board hereby reapproves the current directors of the building corporation. Section 7, that the building corporation may issue, sell, and deliver the bonds pursuant to the applicable laws of the state of Indiana. May encumber any real property or equipment acquired by it for the purpose of financing the construction and equipping of such school facilities, and may enter into contracts for the sale of the bonds and the construction and if acquisition of such school facilities. Section 8, the school corporation reasonably expects that tax-exempt obligations issued by or on behalf of the school corporation, including the bonds as well as other bonds and temporary loan warrants of the school corporation, will not exceed $10 million in calendar year 2023. The bonds in the amount not to exceed $6,105,000 are hereby designated as qualified tax-exempt obligations for purposes of Section 265b of the Internal Revenue Code of 1986 as amended. Section 9, the school corporation reasonably expects that tax-exempt obligations issued by or on behalf of the school corporation, including the bonds as well as other bonds and temporary loan warrants of the school corporation will not exceed $15 million in the calendar year 2023 pursuant to Section 148f4d of the code. The school corporation irrevocably allocates the building corporation $6,105,000 of its $15,000 limit for purposes of qualifying for the small governmental exception to the rebate requirement. Did y'all get that? Because there's going to be a quiz here in a couple of minutes, so.
Fantastic job.
It's really fun. Okay. And then that will, we need to vote on that as well? All right. Motion to accept the third resolution reapproving the form of the building corporation.
Some move.
Thank you, Steven.
Second.
And Jenny. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries seven to zero. Okay, number four, reimbursement resolution. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the school corporation declares its official intent to acquire, construct, or rehabilitate the projects with proceeds of obligation incurred on behalf of the school corporation in a principal amount not to exceed $6,105,000 for the purpose of paying or reimbursing costs of the projects and to approve obligations issued by leasing entity that will lease the projects to the school corporation. Be it further resolved that the school corporation reasonably expects to reimburse itself from proceeds of obligations issued on behalf of the school corporation for costs of the projects paid prior to the issuance of the obligation. Questions there? And I will accept a motion for the reimbursement resolution.
Some move.
Mark?
Second.
Ethan? Oh, good. Number five. Oh, sorry. All in favor, sorry. Motion carries seven to zero. Number five, approval of the proposal for Meridian Architectural Design for RMS HVAC and lighting upgrade.
So, Terry Thornsberry is here, and I'm asking him to do just a very short presentation of the projects that we're looking at, the before and why there are concerns there, and then to also answer any questions in regards to entering in the agreement with him. So, Terry, if you'd like to come forward and share some of the information you've gathered.
All right, thank you. All right, good evening, everyone. So, as per Jan's request, she had asked me to do the other presentation to go over the projects that we're proposing for the 2023 bond. I'm Terry Thornsberry. For those of you who don't know me, I recognize a few faces around the table. There's a few new ones. I've been working with school corporations since about 2011, so the last 12 years, seems like yesterday. We have done over 100 projects with school corporations over the years and got to know these buildings very, very well. So, again, I'm going to focus on the 2023 bond projects. So, the first one is Riddle Elementary Roof Replacement. So, Reynolds Roof is one of the remaining roofs that has not been replaced, and it is aged and has quite a few issues. Because I get quite a few emails about roof leaks and other things, and I usually help out trying to get the roofing contractor over here to help fix those issues and put Band-Aids on this one in most cases because we knew we would eventually replace it. So, this project, bullet points there, demo and remove the remaining portions of the old roof system. I'm going to show you some images here in a second. Replace the roof curbs for the HVAC. Replace the roof curbs for the HVAC equipment, roof drains. Install new roof edge metal. One other thing that's an issue on this building is the same Columbia head. So the gymnasium is a brick structure that comes up through the building and brick will allow water through. So that water gets into the wall, comes down, shows up in the ceiling. I know where it shows up in the ceiling all the time and it actually shows up all the way down when real heavy rains occur. So we're going to waterproof that wall and we're going to put siding on it. We're putting a sign on Riddle, just like we did Columbia. So they'll look very similar. Install a new building sign, like I said. And then right now, actually, we've been working ahead just because we're overachievers. We're about sixty-five percent done with the design already with the intent of getting it done and out to bid because we know the roofing contractors fill up their schedules fast and we need to get it out to bid later this year in order to get it on a summer schedule for next year. So as soon as you guys secure the bonds, we will put it out to bid and be ready to run with it as fast as we can as we're getting that going. So right now that is planned for something like twenty-four, like I said, and probable cost is about one point four million dollars.
One point.
Four?
One point four.
So this is the roof at Riddle. You can see the part on the left that's white. That's new that we did a few years ago. The part that is gray is the old part. And then the white square that's in the middle, that actually is the gym room. And it is a different roofing system than the white that's on the left. And it's, it is the most brittle, absolutely fallen parts called geoflex. And the roofing contractors told me for years that it's failing disassembly. So we have to get that roof on there. So I can be showing.
Put the black roof on the balance of the building is still.
It's actually a balanced roof. You can see in the pictures there it's stone.
Okay.
Over top of a built up tar roof system, basically. Picture on the left's hard to see in here, but that's a picture of the brick. The brick's actually spalling and falling off the building. And that's because water freezes in that wall and then chunks of brick fall off. So.
And that's what was happening in Columbia as well.
Yeah, same thing, same exact thing. The picture on left that you can't see on the bottom is actually the, the metal siding and sign that we did at Columbia to improve that situation. As far as I know, we no longer have water coming through those walls because we put a Band-Aid on top of a Band-Aid and really made it waterproof. All right. Technology's a one.
It is a one.
It works, yes.
So, and for those of you who've been on the board for many, many years, Jen, you've been on the board long enough. Sandy was here and she would ask me how many, how many roofs exist?
How many roofs?
But, right. There's a lot. So, because you think.
I thought you were going to give a number.
How long, how long can a roof cost one point four million dollars? It's because it's a lot of area, so. And a big mess to tear it off and replace it entirely. So the bigger, more exciting project, this one's still evolving a little bit, is the middle school auditorium renovation. That space has had issues over the years with humidity issues. When we replaced the roof on the middle school, that roof, we're literally, we have a video of it. When we're standing there, we cut a four foot square out of the roof and you're standing there and all of a sudden you see the roof deck just disappear. Because it was so brittle and rusted out that it just collapsed. And I'll show you pictures where that lands. But that was a big undertaking to deal with because the ceiling system in there was actually supported by that roof deck, which was rusted out completely. So luckily it didn't fail over time. But we're going to help deal with that. So we're going to demo and remove the existing ceiling system in its entirety. We're going to remove the lighting in there. The lighting is going out slowly. You know, if you go in there and turn the lights on, you're like, okay, half the lights aren't on. Well, they don't work anymore. And the wiring is so brittle that it can't be fixed. So it's not an option to try to replace it. The HVAC system, so that, when it was originally built, has heat only. The original unit is still in the mechanical room. It's never had air conditioning or dehumidification. It's kind of important for a pool that's putting out a lot of heat and moisture all the time. So we're going to do a new HVAC unit that's going to be ground mounted, similar to the one that's around the corner on the middle school for the chiller. Because the new unit's so big, it won't fit inside the building and it's so heavy, we can't put it on top of the building. So we're going to ground mount it and then enclose it so that you won't see it. We're going to remove the mosaic tile on the floor and we're going to do probably an epoxy floor system there and get rid of all those little brown and yellow tiles that kind of dates the space. Remove asbestos that's in the mechanical room. We're going to evaluate the pool. As part of this project, we have to empty the pool. And from what Jana remembers, since she's been here, it's never been empty at her time. So, and Doug and I are talking about potentially addressing some equipment for the pool as well. So that's why this is a, still a work in progress as far as exactly what we're doing. Why we have the pool empty, it's an opportunity to clean and freshen up the inside of the pool, make sure we don't see any issues in there. The walls in there, if you go into the auditorium, you'll notice that the ceiling starts about nine or ten feet above the walls. Well, the walls don't keep going after that. So we need to take the walls all the way up to the deck so that the space is enclosed and then we can heat and cool it the right way. Because years ago, you used to become in the main entrance of the middle school on Monday and you would get slapped in the face with chlorine because that would ventilate itself all the way over there. So we closed, we built a wall and I closed that off so it would stop doing that years ago, once we figured out what it was doing. But this will remedy those issues, help make the, the space better and should be a lot more efficient to operate as well. Install new LED lighting, new HVAC ductwork, renovate the existing mechanical room and turn that into a storage space, which is desperately needed in the auditorium. We're still working on the design scope and we've done our field verification. We're constantly doing parts and pieces of that. So we're barely getting started on this one. And again, right now, and this is part of what we need to figure out, the lead time on that, just that mechanical is twenty-six weeks right now. Which is better than it used to be because we used, we have some that's been over here. So with that, we know we're going to have a long lead time to get the equipment to show up. So we're going to have to bid it and then approve at least the order of the equipment and then construction will start months later. This potentially will be a nine month project. So we're trying, we're going to have to work with Jana and schools as far as who uses the pool. And we're going to lose it for a while, but when it's all said and done, it'll be very similar to the look that we have in the gymnasium adjacent to that, as far as how the ceiling's going to be open. It's going to be bright and airy and not all closed in and dark and like that. So this one right now, about two point three seven million is what we're estimating for this one.
And so Terry, what I'm hearing you say in this is then, obviously, this has been a long time coming as far as needs in the auditorium. But one of the things we've been looking at is our operations costs and it appears that this will help that as well.
It will. That, well, and then part of scope and still needing to meet with Jana and others is putting a cover on that pool would make a world of difference. Because it's like having a pot of water at home on the oven or the stove with no lid on it, what's going to happen? It evaporates. So you're basically dumping more heat and water into that to keep it at a certain level. And that's what happened to that roof over time.
So you're losing a lot of moisture up there.
You are, you're right. Right, and in fact, there was one point, I remember Jana calling me. It was raining in the gymnasium. She's like, how can it rain in the gymnasium? I'm like, are the doors open to the pool? Well, yeah. And so none of that moisture was getting sucked out of the pool when it was all going over there and condensating on cold metal because it's cold outside and it makes it rain, so. So yes, it should be a huge improvement. And talking to Doug about the mechanic, or the equipment for the pool itself, we need to figure out what can be more efficient, what makes more sense. But we need to look at more of this project. So this number may change slightly depending on the scope as we keep working through it. So, but we needed to get started on these things so that we weren't waiting because there's a timeline to spend this bond money and we know this is a sizable project as well. It's an important one. So a few pictures with this one for those of you who don't get spent time in there. So the picture on the right is just looking at space across the pool and then you zoom into the ceiling and you see all those little squares. And Doug and I were just there fifty-five minutes ago or so. And there's one of those laying there that fell off. And I've, over all the years of being here, I've never found one just laying there. And I was like, hey, how heavy is this? Because if it falls from twenty feet, is it going to hurt? It weighs about two pounds. It's going to hurt. It'd probably go to the hospital. So you don't want those falling off. What it is, is the, the passers that hold it to the ceiling have rusted and it just, they just fall off. So not a great design. The picture that's really, you can't really tell what it is on the left, that's the chicken wire and the, the, it's basically steel rod. That thing is like a papier-mache plaster mess. And it's wires that hold that entire ceiling up from.
So it's inside because the wall doesn't go all the way, so it's.
Right. And it's held, now those wires are attached to the structural system that holds up the roof, but one of the most bizarre things. And, and basically what happens is the air in there just goes up into that space and then gets pulled out through fans in the roof. But the mechanical system blows out from up there too in the ductwork and people have crawled over the ductwork and crushed it and just half of it leaks and it's just, it's a big mess. It'll be, it's one of our projects we've been waiting, waiting, waiting to deal with. It's now time to do whatever we need to do. Next slide. So again, more pictures of that. And that's the, that's the mechanical room unit right there with red buckets in front of it, which is about, I don't know, about fourth the size of the new unit. So the new unit's about half the size of school bus. It's huge and weighs over fourteen thousand pounds. That's why we can't put it on the roof. So it's heavy. But it'll have air conditioning and dehumidification. So even when the space doesn't need to be cooled, it'll keep the humidity down and it'll just deal with humidity by itself. So, but you'll go in there sometimes, it is just hot and humid. And it's not today because the heater's broken. So, but, so yes, great improvements, hopefully make that space more efficient.
Terry, did that, that number you showed, did that include a cover for the pool?
No, there's certain things I'm talking about that we would love to do, but it's going to take a committee to, to agree to some of these things. And I'm just, Jana knows all the things I'd love to do to space if we have limited money. So we try to do what we can, but I've always stood for, we really did put a cover on this thing. And in an ideal situation, it would be an automatic cover. You hit a button, that way nobody messes with it, it rolls up. But it's also a safety cover that way in case someone fell into the pool with the cover on, they wouldn't, the cover would stop them. So it's a safety thing too. So that may help Todd would know maybe if it would help on insurance costs and things like that too. So just all good things.
Will it light on track?
It would, it would, yeah. Then the last one is an exciting, exciting project. It's domestic water piping and plumbing for the high school. So the water piping in the high school, much like many, many high schools built in the sixties, because I'm dealing with this on the school corporation right now, it's made of galvanized pipe. So galvanized pipe, over time, it's little pinholes in it and it'll leak, it'll leak a lot. And then when you shut it off to try to fix that leak, you turn it back on, it leaks somewhere else and then it leaks somewhere else and leaks somewhere else. Well, Doug and I met over there last week and there isn't a whole lot of that going on luckily. So you don't have a lot of pinholes. The issues are the piping and the shut offs on fixtures and the fixtures and other things. So I'm going to show you some pictures here. But it's remove portions of the galvanized piping where we can and need to. Remove or replace the existing shut off valves in the mechanical room above the ceilings. Remove asbestos pipe insulation that's still in the building. Add new shut off valves needed throughout the building. Remove or replace the existing shut off valves at existing plumbing fixtures. So much like at home, you have a leaky faucet in the bathroom and you get under the safety can, you turn off the valves and that turns the water off so your husband can fix the leaky sink. Kids that are more than fixing that, so he gets fixed at my house. And then you realize, hey, that valve isn't shutting off the water. Oh, now I got to go shut off the water for the whole house and then replace that valve and replace the faucet or it all goes backwards. So in the case of this picture I'm going to show you in the kitchen at high school, Doug showed it. So that picture in the bottom left is a faucet and you see how much water's running there, right there in the picture. It runs like that twenty-four seven. Because Doug tried to shut the water off on the two valves on the wall right below that and they're both broken. So it doesn't turn off. So he said, okay, I'm going to go backwards. So he went above the ceiling and he tried to shut one off and the handle broke off. And then he tried to shut the other one off and it said it just absolutely knocked it. So the next one is shut off back further or the main, back in the mechanical room, which is in the picture right above that. So that, that's where the water comes in the building. As you can see, it leaks a little bit there. And then also the picture on the upper right, it's hard to see, but it actually goes down under the building. There's tunnels under the high school and it goes through there. So and then the picture of the lower right is where it is in the mechanical room. It runs through the ceilings, it runs under the building, it's all over the place. We did a takeoff just to replace piping, just the piping, main piping, and not even touch where it comes down into the wall or all the valves and the plumbing fixtures and all of that stuff. And that number alone was over four million dollars just to replace the piping. So we're not going to do that because we can't afford to. So we're going to step back and we're going to deal with plumbing fixtures, shut off valves, the valves in the ceiling and work our way through the building to fix those issues. And then whatever we have left over, we'll deal with bigger issues like big shut off valves, like the main valve for the whole building. We run into it in buildings all the time where, hey, that valve just was original from nineteen sixty-five. When's the last time it's been used? Never. And so it's, it's not going to close. And it's, so you end up having to shut down the building and take care of that. We, the same thing happened on the big mechanical project for those of you who were around then for the high school where Herman Getz tried to shut off things so we could replace piping and then like it doesn't do anything. So it cuts piping out and it's, it's a huge mess. So that's what this project is. It's, it is, it's something that needs done because if and when that starts to leak overall, then it creates big messes. And I have another school corporation that we're working with right now happened this last summer in part of the building. And they came in on a Monday and found a flooded hallway. Luckily they have terrazzo floors and it didn't hurt anything, but it had ruptured in the ceiling, you know, on a Saturday or something and they came in and found it. And sure enough, it's, it's all due to the same type of piping that was popular back in the sixties, so. So that's the projects in a nutshell. I think my next slide discussed just, yeah, questions. So we're going to do our best to try to spend this money wisely because bang for a buck like we try to do all the time and just work our way through this. The, the piping one is going to be the last one of, of the three. It's less critical and I'm going to get in a bucket and some towels and help Doug fix that same, but other than that, the bigger, more important one is going to be Riddle Roof because it has been a problem for years. And then the auditorium is about time to be able to shut that down, so. Questions, comments?
Terry, how much was the total cost on that plumbing?
Right now, it's just the balance of what's going to be left. So I, I put it at two million. We may end up putting more into the auditorium so that's going to come out of that plumbing budget. So it's all numbers game at this point.
Thank you, Terry.
All right.
So at this time, we would need to vote on the approval of the proposal for Meridian Architectural Design for the RMS HVAC and lighting upgrade. I will accept a motion.
So we're voting just on the RMS portion and the rest was informational because I heard Jana. The summit.
Thank you, Jenny.
Second.
Ethan. All right. All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries seven to zero. We have the third and final reading of the policies laid out for you. And there are several. I'm not going to read through all of them because they are, all the numbers because it's just way too hard. But anyway, if you have any questions on any of those policies that we've been talking about since July, August, September, yeah, I'd be glad to answer those. Any questions on the new policies? If not, honor team a motion that we, that we go ahead and vote on these and put them in the books. So. Casey. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries seven to zero. Next, we have, uh, approval of the RMS Choir's request for an exception to the Wednesday rule on September twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three. Cassie, do you mind covering just a bit of that?
Sure. Um, I know they do a performing arts calendar yearly. Um, and what they didn't expect was there was an athletic event added. Um, and it went on top of when the choir concert was, um, of athletics or not using Wednesdays and whatnot. It was easier to ask to move the choir concert and he requested and talked with Mike Allen at the high school to combine a care date, which is on a Wednesday. Um, so he wrote that up and then I just added to the bottom that this is due to an athletic event we scheduled on top of. So it won't be commonplace, I don't believe, unless they like doing it together. And I think all high schools are listed, yeah.
I'm sure.
Yeah. But for the rest of the year, they're already scheduled out, not on Wednesday, so.
Okay, any questions?
So this requires the high school concert to be bumped back.
I think time thirty minutes possible?
I mean, if my calendar was correct.
Yeah, which, I mean.
Katie, unless anybody wants to pull one of these out, all of these approvals can be taken together with one vote if you want to.
All right, great. Any questions about the, uh, RMS Choir and the Wednesday night exception? All right, moving on. Number eight, approval of the overnight field trip for the wrestling team on November twenty-third and the sleep-in at RHS. Number nine is approval of an overnight field trip for the wrestling team on December twenty-first, twenty twenty-three. Uh, Joe Bruin Holiday Duels in Rensler, at Rensler High School. Number ten, approval of an overnight field trip for the wrestling team on December twenty-eighth, North Montgomery Holiday Tournament, Greensville, Indiana. Uh, number eleven, approval of an overnight field trip for the wrestling team on February ninth, twenty twenty-four, IHSAA Semi-State Wrestling Tournament in Fort Wayne. And number twelve, approval of an overnight field trip for wrestling team on February fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, IHSAA State Wrestling Tournament in Evansville. All right. Any questions on any of those? I would entertain a motion that we approve the middle school choir and the wrestling field trips at this point.
Summum.
Thank you, Jenny.
Second.
And Ethan. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries seven to zero. Next, we have the, uh, information, first reading of Bylaw ten sixty-four point five. Oh, one, six, four point five, thank you, yes. All right, which is member participation in meetings through electronic means of communication. And this is, uh, do we need to read it all? We've been over, oh, okay, we went over to the study session and, uh, so we'll just move forward, we don't need to act on that at this time. Okay. Next, we have donations. Thank you. Okay, at Columbia, at Columbia Elementary, we have six hundred dollars for the kindergarten honeywell trip from the Northern Indiana Community Foundation. We also have for Columbia Elementary, five hundred dollars for the first grade honeywell trip, again from the Northern Indiana Community Foundation. The third one for Riddle is five hundred dollars for the apple orchard trip, also from the Northern Indiana Community Foundation. We're very grateful for that.
If, if I may, all of those that say the Northern Indiana Community Foundation, I met with, um, a donor who would like to remain anonymous. We spent a great deal of time together. I asked principals and directors what, um, uh, needs that they may have that would help promote programming, things that would be out of, uh, what we have already budgeted for. And they sent in proposals to us. And I met with, um, Brian Johnson and a donor who would like to remain anonymous. And this donor, anything that you see from Northern Indiana Community Foundation are ones that came through, um, that private donor that we had conversations with and I spent probably ninety minutes with.
So Janet, is that, I know we had established a few years ago, a donor established, not us as the corporation, um, a fund for Rochester Community Schools specifically at the Community Foundation. Was, were these monies funneled through that or this was a different?
This is a different.
So did they create a new fund or they just wanted the Community Foundation to handle the monies?
They just wanted the foundation. My understanding is they wanted the foundation to handle the funds.
Okay.
This, they have donated in the past.
I'm curious why not to use the fund that's established as the vehicle? I would think that that, if there were any redundancies in administrative fees, that that would be. So, yeah, I mean, not that this affects right here, but if, if those kinds of things happen and it's something to let people know, you could donate ten dollars or a hundred dollars or fifty thousand dollars if you wanted through this fund at the Community Foundation. That's, that's for Rochester Community Schools.
Okay, uh, the fourth item, also Columbia Elementary, the amount is unknown. Pumpkins for, uh, fall break for their fall festival from the Optimist Club. Also, Riddle Elementary is receiving an unknown, uh, donation, amount of the donation for pumpkins for the Fall Break Festival from the Optimist Club. The middle school, uh, received a five hundred dollar donation from the Four RMS PBIS program and that is from the Northern Indiana Community Foundation. Um. Second. Okay. RMS also received eight thousand fifty-eight dollars and fifty cents funding for Stacy's Closet from the Stacy Carvey Shane Holmes Foundation. And next we have RHS, one thousand five hundred dollars. RHS Catering Program Kitchen Needs, and that was from the Northern Indiana Community Foundation as well. RHS, one hundred seventy-five dollars. Thirty-five five-dollar gift cards for RHS Zebra of the Week, and that's from the bagel shop. RHS unspecified supplies for Artist of the Month and Take Home Borough Bags for Students, third year for donation. And that is from Matt and Julie Sutton. Uh, the corporation received a donation for five hundred dollars for an AED from the Community Foundation. Uh, the corporation also received fifteen hundred dollars for the fax program from the Community Foundation. And the corporation also received fifteen hundred dollars for the letters? Program.
Professional development.
Got it, okay. From the Northern Indiana Community Foundation. So, um, very grateful to all of our donors and a special shout out to our anonymous donor. Um, we are incredibly blessed by your donations and thank you very much, all of you. So, do we have to accept those donations? All right. Anybody wanna not accept them? Just check it, okay. If we, I'll entertain a motion.
Summum.
Casey.
Second.
Ethan. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries seven to zero. The personnel report. Columbia Elementary Fall Intercession, Brittany Ross, first grade teacher at her hourly rate. Michelle Jaeger, kindergarten teacher at her hourly rate. Ashley Shuck, instructional assistant at her hourly rate. Riddle Elementary, Deanna Lewis, special needs instructional assistant, hourly rate of twelve fifty-nine. Transportation Department, Seth Manns, corporation bus driver. We got one. Athletic Department, Sandy Campbell, volunteer RHS volleyball. Mike Smith, volunteer coach for RMS Tennis Club. FMLA, Kristen Horn, intermittent through, no, uh, shoot, September thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. Alexis McSherry, maternity leave, eight twenty-three, twenty-three through nine twenty-nine, twenty-three. Returning to the classroom October second. Resignation, Carleen Musselman, effective September eleventh, twenty twenty-three. I would, uh, accept a motion to approve the personnel report as read.
I have a quick question.
Yes.
Katie, if you don't mind. When we have, um, people who are normally employed with us as instructional assistants fill in as like the intercession teacher, do we pay them more than their IA rate? I would assume so. Does that need to be reflected on here? Because there's at least one person that is, that is, so that we make sure that they are paid for what they're fulfilling.
Do you know, Jason, what that hourly rate was, or that?
I, I know which teacher it is and it's already been communicated to, um, Amber and, um, Kathy. They're, they're tracking it. I don't know what was put on that or how that was put on there, I mean.
And the only reason I ask is because my understanding is one of the main reasons we approve these personnel reports is so that the auditors can match the, the person with the pay. So that's why, just wanted to make sure that. So if they already have that, that should be a simple fix to add to it.
Okay, I would, uh, accept a motion with, um, with the amendment Jenny brought up. As soon as we get that to Amber, then we can include that in the minutes, so, uh.
Summum.
Stephen, second. Casey. All right, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries seven to zero. Next, we have the superintendent's business.
Mr. Snyder, do you mind starting us off?
Nope. Luke told me I didn't talk too long, so I'm gonna keep this lid for the guys. Uh, things that have happened over the last month. We completed our Alice Drill, which I told you guys we were preparing to, uh, do the month before. And, uh, our staff did a fantastic job with that. Our kids did a great job, all around good training. We completed our Stop the Bleed training with our staff. Uh, had a fantastic turnout of that, even had, uh, IAs attend that. It opened up to anybody that wants to attend. All of our teachers are required to attend it. And, um, we had IAs that came in on their own time because they wanted to learn more about how that process works. Um, and that's good training, um, just for any time, just like your, um, CPR training and things like that. I mean, you could use that in a, on your way home or on a bike accident. So, um, we, we really, uh, enjoy, we don't enjoy doing that training, but it's, it's very good training for our staff. Um, we have, last, we always have kids that, uh, take down our flags at the end of the day. Um, but we've kind of, um, upped that a little bit. So, uh, what we're doing now is having classes volunteer, um, to take the flag down at the end of the day. And, uh, Donna, who just came on board with us, um, she is, um, taking all of our kids and teaching them the proper ways to, not all the kids, the kids of the, uh, classes that choose to do it and the students that choose to do it. It's, it's an optional thing for them, but, um, they're spending a full month of learning about how to properly take care of the flag, bring it down, they fold it up at the end of the day. You've probably seen pictures on social media of that. Um, but we've got a little more organized now. And, um, at the end of the month, those classes were, um, giving, uh, giving a little bit of a pizza party for just taking care of our flag. And, uh, and it's been a really, uh, the kids really enjoy it. Again, optional for them, if they wanna participate, they can, they don't have to. Um, but they have a lot of fun doing it and, uh, and it's really neat to see them out there taking care of that every day. So if anybody ever asks why our flag is down so early at Columbia, um, in the afternoon, um, we do revelry at, uh, two forty-five, so, or, uh, retreat, so, yeah. And, um, the, uh, the, we've already booked up like all of our classes. We opened it up for classes to do it and we've already booked for the whole year. So, um, it's really, really neat to see those kids doing that. Uh, we had a student just recently who, um, may have seen some pictures over social media. Uh, mom has shared that I can share, um, publicly. But we had a student, um, his name is Aiden and, uh, he just recently completed his, uh, uh, cancer treatments. He, um, was, had leukemia and, um, he was fortunate enough to finish his final treatment and, uh, is now cancer-free. So, um, we, um, sent a couple of, a couple of us went up to the, uh, Children's Hospital up in South Bend and were fortunate enough to be there when he got to ring the bell up at the hospital. Um, but then we also did a little ceremony for Columbia. And, um, like we have with the seniors, when they walk the, the halls, we had Aiden walk the halls and, uh, we brought in one of the bells from the, uh, fire department and they had an opportunity. He come, he got to ring that thing and ring it loud in the, in the hallways. And, um, it was just really special. The kids made signs for him. Um, Nurse Butler at the time, she sent out information about, um, the type of cancer and that we shared that with our students. So the students would understand why we were doing it. And, uh, just an all-around very good, um, um, special, very thankful event that we were able to do. So I wanted to share that. Uh, things we've got coming up, we have Zebra Zone, uh, our first Zebra Zone next Friday. We are working on integrity as, uh, this month's character treat and it has gone very well. We have a, uh, Duke Energy Show scheduled for Monday. Um, Duke Energy provides free shows. Uh, they're just little skit shows. They send in a couple of people and, uh, they talk about energy, ways to save energy at home and different things like that. Uh, they do not try to sell anything. Uh, they do a really good job, the kids enjoy it. We've done that for several years. We have Intercession coming up from nine through twelve of October. We have the Fall Festival, Fall Festival Enrichment, which is, um, on the eleventh of October. And, uh, we are doing a fire safety program with the Rochester Fire Department, um, on October twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth. And that is when they come out and set up their, um, firehouse in our gym. And every student in the building gets to go through that and meet firefighters, uh, talk about fire safety. And, uh, just an all-around good program for, for the students to be able to, uh, not only use when they're at school, but, uh, they focus really on home safety as well. Um, because we, we, we teach them a lot about school safety, but they learn a lot about other things at home that, uh, that we may not hit on. So, we're excited about that.
I appreciate the communication about Aiden and also that there was representation of, thank you, Jason, and your group of building and being with him to celebrate in South Bend. That is, I'd love to be honest. And also, I don't know if this is like a directive from you or if you were really in the lunchroom, but I also heard that tray kids must try at least one vegetable. And I appreciate that if you, if you're successful at that, I would be very impressed.
I, I, I'll probably get in trouble for forcing them, but I asked them to. I didn't force them to. I asked them to try the vegetables, at least two bites, and then I went around and asked them what they thought of it. And it turned out pretty well, so.
I heard cucumber fett, but, you know. That's, that's a good old thing.
Try to do what I can.
That sounds like you heard me talk.
Our fourth graders went to the Trail of Courage last Friday and that went very well. I hear the teachers like it when they buy the bird whistles on the way home for the bus. Selling those Trail of Courage. Uh, the Barkman Optimist Bunch is doing a great job. Uh, they're, they're really awesome. It's a, um, and they're busy selling lemonade and actually apple cider as well. And Pretzels on Fridays, raising money for different things for, to, to help our students. It's a great program. Um, you know, the Optimist Club here in Rochester does a phenomenal job incorporating them. And I know they're helping to pick pumpkins and things like that as well. Um, as Mr. Snyder said, we're prepping for Intercession, our invites are going out. And next week is College Go Week, so we'll be having some dress-up days and promoting college. Any questions?
Um, we had some teacher eye-ready training, which was very helpful. Um, we have some more of that coming up, that the teachers really appreciated getting to use our data that we have and work through that with some experts in eye-ready. And we are liking it already, um, and we are doing a lot with our data as well already because it's vastly different than what in NWA, which we knew would be the case. Our fall athletics are very busy and doing well. Um, we also started our Artist of the Month. And so you'll see a donation coming through next month for the same people doing the same thing at the middle school. So that was exciting. ZBN put out their first episode last week. Uh, we had an awesome homecoming. We, we piggybacked on the dress-up days of the high school and then Fist Bump Friday was a huge success at RMS. If you saw any of those posts, kids loved coming to school that Friday with the big zebra head blown up. It was a great time. Lots of kids went through dozens of times. It was great. The high school football boys were there fist bumping everybody and it was a good time. It was raining and still they went through. It was raining and still they went through several times. Our activity period RMS has really blown up this year in a great way. We've had lots of new activities going on at RMS during that time. We did some butterfly releases, we've got ukuleles being taught how to use those, we've got a big fantasy football thing going on, scrapbooking, junior optimist meets during that times, rockets, we have a fishing and ecology club that's new this year as well as woodworking, jewelry making and gardening. Coming up, we have our PBIS Day, we're going to do some flag football with our fall festival at the middle school. Intercession invites went out today. We have an enrichment opportunity with pickleball and Mr. Kissler. Our fall sports will wrap up at that time. Any questions?
You mentioned this, Kat, I'm sorry. You mentioned this and I did hear this was an ITeam decision. Thank you for coordinating the dress-up days across schools. I just thought that was so cool. I'm sure families appreciated it and plus it was neat to see on social media and have them all be the same, so.
They were fun.
Excellent.
I was just gonna, back on the choir, choir concert. Do they still, to my knowledge, they had their dates set every year repeated to avoid any conflict?
Yep, pretty much.
So, that's still a thing?
A performing arts calendar.
Okay. Just making sure.
Clarify that issue, it's a sixth grade volleyball game and Secretary Marks, I hope that gets on film, I call him Secretary Marks, Gary Marks, who's phenomenal at that. Read it as RMS Choir and until three years ago, RMS Choir was seventh and eighth grade and it wouldn't have conflicted with sixth grade, so it was a miscommunication between Secretary Marks and I.
I blame Oscar.
Mr. Haas?
Yeah. I'm gonna be going back and forth a little bit with what we got coming up and what we've already done, because when I put this list together on the way back from Montcella today with the ladies in the office. We have a chili cook-off team that's been put together. I had to test fifteen different chilies the other day. I mean, I'm built for that, but after you get about four chilies in, they all taste kind of the same. If it was one that I think could go out there and win that chili cook-off for the school corporation. We had an alumni member, Dylan Weaver, who's in EMT now, brought an ambulance, which caused a little bit of a headache because I didn't give the corporation a heads up. So, the building across the parking lot was concerned, we had an issue, but we got that taken care of. That was neat, he presented to the biomed classes, they got to check out the ambulance. It was a pretty cool hands-on experience for those students. We did complete the homecoming activities successfully, won the homecoming game, had a good week of those activities. The bonfire was a success, we didn't burn down the fairgrounds there. Mr. Fairboard member. Mr. Lau had spatula presentations. If you've never seen the spatula presentations, the kids do a remarkable job of designing, patenting and it's kind of a competition within that class. And then we had five outside judges. And I don't even want to, I can name three of them real quick and I will forget who the other two are, so I'm not going to name them, but we appreciated them coming in and judging that and handing out different prizes to those kids. Mr. Pearson took the kids on his annual river rafting trip the other day and it was about sixty-eight degrees out, so that was probably a good time. The FFA Pork Chop Dinner, a success as it is every year. I think our boys enjoyed Fist Bump Friday as much as the middle school kids and I know the big push now is we're trying to get it over to Riddle and Columbia before football season's over. I can't take credit for any of that, so I know that people are starting to reach out. If they haven't, they will be. I promise kids, we're gonna try and bring it to you. Our Spanish students attended the Indiana Latinos Summit College and Career Fair, which is a pretty neat experience for them. They get kind of taught a little bit about resumes, about the college experience, the opportunity for them to get some college funding and so forth. Hernandez has taken them to that and that's a pretty good experience for them. American Studies did a pretty neat thing. They took all of our juniors out and I think they had twelve pontoons with twelve pontoon drivers. They did a tour of Lake Manito, learned the history of that. One of our American Studies teachers has lived in this town his whole life and he said he learned more there than he's probably ever knew about the lake. So, it was a pretty neat experience for adults and kids. Our seniors this year put together a sunrise breakfast where they came in about six-thirty. Couple of the senior dads went out there and cooked and they just kind of hung out on the football field. It was kind of a neat experience for the kids. The fall play has been cast. And Athlet, or FFA Soil Judging has started, that's a big deal. We usually place pretty high and go to nationals in that. Eighth grade is headed to the Logan Sport Career Center this week for their annual field trip there to see what is offered down there. We have Intercession coming up after twelve more days of school until fall break and then we do have an enrichment trip planned down to Ivy Tech Kokomo to check out the like mechanical stuff that they have down there that we offer at the beginning of and they could really expand for students. So, we got that pushed out to kids today. We do have College Go Week coming up, which I think all of us do. The guidance department planned that today. I went in the building today, so I don't know exactly what all is going on at RHS, but they'll have a great plan for that. The girls golf team won the TRC and they got second in sectional today and are going to regional on Saturday. The football team's four and O in conference. The big deal in athletics though is we just had a meeting with Event Link, which is our athletic provider. We host several IHSA tournament events and this year the IHSA is requiring that we accept digital tickets. So, for the public to hear and for you guys to be able to answer questions, if you have questions, please let us know. I believe starting with next Tuesday or next Thursday's soccer game, because we're going to start with soccer, work our way to volleyball and then try and do Northfield Football, digital tickets will be offered for Rochester High School sports. Because it's mandatory to offer it for the volleyball regional that we're going to host for the IHSA and we need to practice before we bring all the outside people in. So, that's what we got going on at RHS and I'm sure I missed a ton, but we'll go with that. Anything, questions?
I would just like to say, please extend my eternal gratitude to the culinary arts class for taking on chili cook-off.
They're excited about it.
Super excited that they were so excited at my ass.
We said no because we're on fall break and the kids were mad at us, so Mrs. Masterson gave in to the kids, so now they're really excited about it.
Yeah, that was fantastic. And then driving up to see the Fist Bump Friday, I didn't, didn't know anything about it and I drove up to drunk Gabe Earloff and here was the zebra and I think I was more excited about it than he was. I was like, that is so cool. So, whoever's idea that was, so cool.
It was FCA and football moms and like, I think, would I be missing another group? It was not my idea, but we happily said yes.
It, it was really amazing to drive up and to see that. I mean, it was just like, oh my gosh, it was, it was great. I would love to see the little ones be able to pull up and see that.
There were siblings that were upset that they couldn't get out.
Mrs. Bowers with food tools?
Our annual financial report has been submitted. We have sent out notifications for the carryover statuses to households to make sure anybody that wants to recertify can. There's not really a lot out there that possibly could because some of them are the ones that qualified because of COVID and with the COVID restrictions going, some of them no longer qualify, but we are trying to work with those households to make sure we can get them recertified if they can. We also met with the, or I and the manager at middle school met with the fifth grade FACS class. We took them through the cafeteria, showed them how the equipment worked, talked about how we do our menus, why it has to be placed, answered any questions or anything that they wanted to learn. And I met with our new field nutrition specialist, so we have a new one this year. And coming up, the sixth grade FACS class would like to do the same. Come in, learn the equipment and ask and answer questions for them. The high school culinary class is going to come in and we're going to do a little cooking demonstration on how each pieces of our equipment works. And our verification for our application processes start October first. So, anybody that has applied for free breakfast lunches, it is a random pick as far as what percentage. Last year, there were three applications that we had to send this out to and this year it will be based on whoever we get back in before that October first date. Any questions? Thank you.
We've been working on the twister that's been giving us a headache, Don and I. So, and I would like to thank Jana and her family for the use of their UTV while we're trying to get it fixed. And then we're still trying to do some storm damage cleanup over at Riddle. We still have trees down that we're trying to get cleaned up. And I just wanted everybody to know that Don went back to four days a week last week, so he went back down to part-time, so he's not gonna be working five days a week anymore. And I really appreciate the patience that everybody has given, both him and I, since we're just kind of sort of limited staff right now. So, I appreciate the patience from everybody. Yeah, we're trying our best to get everything done in a timely manner, but it's all taken a little bit of time.
Any questions?
Thank the board for, we got our two new buses, drivers love them. Got a new driver, as you guys seen, he's about halfway through his training, proceeding very well. Still looking for some sub-drivers. Sub-drivers would be wonderful right now and, because I'm the only one that can drive. And we're holding our own, the buildings and everybody, even the board, thank you for everything, patience. It's a rough start, but we got, we got almost figured out and it's a smooth, getting smoother, but we just thank you all for what you think guys do for transportation side in the school.
Well, just one quick thing, just for the public to put this together, you know, our transportation department is doing a fantastic job and if you would look at, since we're now looking at replacing buses, the amount of money the school corporation is spending on buses to transport, to transport your children, maybe our public could use the buses a little more and cut back on our mom, dad, grandma, whoever, picking them up, dropping them off and creating additional issues there. Everything would run a little smoother, but we already spent a lot of money on the school corporation transporting kids, so just wanted to point that out there, that it's there, so should use it.
I'd just like to share tomorrow morning at nine o'clock, we begin our ambassador program. I know the team is going to be there for introductions. We've had about eight responses, a few I haven't heard one way or the other, so we may have more who show up tomorrow. So, very much looking forward to launching the ambassador program tomorrow. I do want to thank Mrs. Shawley and Mrs. Keller. We started informal bargaining, just ran through some numbers. Mrs. Murphy was there just to double check to make sure we are comparing apples to apples as far as teacher, years of experience, those types of things. So, it's just basic spreadsheets that are being completed, but we probably spent an hour and a half, two hours this morning together.
I think we'll save to say, a race for you, a race for everyone. Throwing money everywhere.
I don't think that was said at all. I don't recall that.
It'll be on the hits for the last study session. There's money for everyone.
And then I want to thank the office staff. I know Todd has been in and out of the office and I just feel a great unity within the administrative office and among all of the directors and principals who are here. So, thank you all for your patience and support and, and helping to keep the workflow going. It means a lot that everybody's helping out. The principals have already shared, fall break's coming up, October fifth through the thirteenth, so please make sure as a parent, if you have questions, if you have concerns about remediation or enrichment programs, that you reach out to those principals. We want to hear from you. We want to help with that and we want to make sure that your students are receiving the services that they need. And that's all that I have.
It's a busy schedule, busy morning. All right. With that, I would accept a motion to adjourn. All of you said. So, we are adjourned. Thank you all for your time this evening.